And I. I can put a note on Facebook that says that they will, it's on, it will be available on YouTube.
Thank you, Gabe.
Okay, number three, um, I think we have one addition under eight committee and department reports. Point eight B, Woodard, Woodard and current update.
Would you also, would you also entertain a um. Appointment to the library trustees?
So, nope, we can do that. Eight C. Library trustee appointment, appointment.
We'll make a motion, we accept their revised agenda.
Second, all those in favor. All right. Number four, approve the minutes from the October eighteenth and October twenty-seventh reading. Don't move so, don't move seconded, all this in favor.
Um, I have this, I was available. I wasn't here last week, but I was here for the eighteen.
No, you were here the twenty-seventh.
You were here the twenty-seventh.
Sure, mate, you're here.
Sure, okay, I got backwards, I'm sorry.
So.
I wasn't here the eighteen.
The rest of us were, correct?
Yeah, yes.
Four, zero, one, on the first one and.
Right.
Or there were one for. And five, zero, four, and twenty-seven, alright.
Alright, number five, approve and sign treasurer's warrants, number eighteen, so moved.
We have a false signature.
Not yet, but we will.
Second, all those in favor.
Alright. Uh, six, communications. Vinyl Haven Land Trust.
Um, so we did receive our payment and moved taxes, it was fourteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars this year. There was a nice letter that came with the check. It talks about some of the programs, I particularly like the fact that they um pay for some of the um. The trips that the kids take, uh, one is to Baxter. State Park and the other went to Tanglewood, uh, that um. The land trust covers the cost of those programs and. I think it's a nice thing for them to do, to support the school.
How much, uh, the fourteen thousand is what they're voluntarily paying?
Yes.
What would be the tax consequence if they were, if they were paying taxes on it? Any idea?
It was all in open spaces, it would be that number, that's what they told us. If they, if there was in the land trust that owned this and it was just a private citizen that owned this land and it was in the open spaces. That is how much they would pay, that's what they told, told us one year.
Who was they?
The land trusts. And Andy, Andy, Andy said. Well, you get ninety-five percent off your taxes supposedly if it's in that open spaces, I guess, if it's. Done right, it's what they said at one meeting, but I don't know if that's true anymore.
In the open space program, there are various percentages, if it is truly open space. Uh, and, and um complies with certain criteria, then. That person, whoever owned it, and if they put it in open space, would get that percentage of a reduction.
Yeah, that's what they, well, now was at a meeting one time when she brought this letter up. Every years ago, and it was in fourteen thousand, but that's what she said they calculated it would be.
I feel like this is the bigger payment from the year before.
Oh, every year it goes up by some, I think it's.
But it seems like a big increase, but maybe I'm just, I don't remember what it was last year.
It's gone up um, like about three thousand, I think it was eleven thousand.
The last payment I remember was like ninety-two hundred and ninety-one.
But it has gone up, which is, that's good to see. And.
I mean, there's no way to know what that land would be worth because. There could be million dollar houses everywhere on it, so there's no way to say what it really be worth, I mean, it's just.
But in its current condition, I think though we're really be, we'll be looking at it, if it wasn't in land trust, if it was still privately held, what would the tax be?
It, it would depend on how they categorize, if they actually. Develop some of it, then it would be worth more, if they put it in open space and they got the highest designation. It'd be this fourteen thousand, seven twenty-seven.
Says it's based on the reduction in taxes, each parcel would be eligible for if enrolled in the state's current use program.
Yeah, the current use program.
And it's recalculated every year to reflect change in mill rate and any change this assessed value. And should be.
Yeah.
I have no idea what that means, but that's what I thought.
Did we last year make the decision to? Did, any, any, we accept it goes into the parks?
It are, definitely, we don't have to make any motions on it tonight, it will just be, that will be the number next year when. Budget process goes, they just get that money.
Okay, alright, I was just making sure.
That was.
Remember, remembered that.
Parks Department gets whatever that money is on line.
I didn't know that they paid for the Katon trip, which I am.
Yeah, they do, they.
I am all for that, so.
They buy, they paid for several different.
Now, land trust is a good thing, and just a question of, do we get, where is the right balance? Right. Okay. Any other questions on that one? Alright, we'll move on to seven, speakers from the floor. There are none present. Gabe, do you have anything to say?
I think she's.
Craig, do you report?
She's a nice anyway.
Downtown project.
We'll move on to eight, committee and department reports appointment, eight A downtown project update.
Okay, and hopefully Biz won't be too noisy, he keeps whining in the background, um. So I, this is like, this is a two-month report instead of a one-month report, so this is everything um since the end of August. Up until October twenty-eighth, so um I don't have anything super exciting to report, I mean. Other than the design, you know, the designs are um. Almost on their way to E D A and. So that's just the E D A portion of the project, which is the, the wastewater. Um, some of the storm water, uh, the water main. Um, the road and the sidewalk, so the sidewalks. So um, in a, in a couple of the um sewer. Um, like the sewer over um the bridge, that's part of this uh. Funding as well, I believe, so um. That's, that should be, I mean, I think they're just double checking things and um. You know, making sure everything is uh correct before. We get it, um, so Marjorie and I will get the design and then we send it off to E D A, there's like, like a couple of letters and checklists that go with that, so I'm. Um, just standing by, waiting for that from Woodard and Curran, that goes to um our project manager at E D A. They have up to thirty days to approve it, um, if we can get it in soon, hopefully they'll want to turn it around before um any holidays. And if everything looks good, then, once we get that, we get um approval to go out to bid, I think there's one more step in between, but. So that will be for the, be able to go out to bid for the E D A portion, there's these. Uh, obstacles still in our way around getting our notice to proceed for M B R C, we had to get an extension. On that because we had essentially one year from the time we were awarded that grant, which was uh September of last year. Um, to get everything in order. The, the glitch for us was, we didn't know they had changed their environmental review process, which has become quite. The heavy lift, um, so we've had to loop order to incur into that um and spent a significant, significant amount of time. Uh, working on that environmental um report. So we're still not done, um, we're hopefully very close to done, um. And once we do that, there's like a thirty-day public notice period that we have to go through, and then if everything works out. Hopefully, it should, I mean, it's essentially the same project that we already did in environmental review and public comment period for just a couple of additions. So um, that will then enable us to get the notice to proceed for M B R C, which means we can pay Woodard and Curran, which is. A, a long overdue thing, and then we will be able to sign a work order with them to do the M B R C portion of the project, which includes. Um, the relocation of Water District Building. Um, the uh boat launches and the downtown parking lot and the repiling of the fish plant. Uh, parking lot. Um, so. Then we have one more grant that we're working on, um, which is now coming through, it's the congressionally di- directed spending, that's the earmark. Um, so that is what we're now calling the EPA grant because it's being administered through envi- environmental protection. So we now have a rep, uh, a contact at the state who's helping us uh with that application and moving forward. There's still a couple of unknowns with that, but that's the third portion of the project, which is um. Additional uh stormwater management, uh particularly at the base of High Street and also in the parking lot. And then um all of the climate adaptation um recommendations for the sewer. That are located within the project area would be covered. Um, an extension of the sewer towards um the end of West Main Street toward the ferry terminal. And um additional um fiscal, uh, fiscal sustainability um. Components of the sewer um that are part of the fiscal sustainability plan are also covered in this grant. So in the, in the EPA grant. So, the road is long and it's been really long. Um, I think there's a lot of good lessons learned here about the multiple. Funding entities and what that looks like to manage, um, but here we are, and we're fortunate that we've gotten all this funding and are able to do these, this infrastructure work. Um, we just have to, you know, keep, keep moving on, so. There's all sorts of other things listed in this in terms of what Woodard and Curran has been doing and, and that they're, they're. Um, you know, their update will say all that, a lot of it is things that I've been just helping with and, and management in terms of. Um, the easement, uh, the easements that will be required and um, you know, different stakeholder um. Conversations and uh engagement, so I don't know if you guys have questions, concerns, things you wanna.
You didn't mention the ship grant, where does that stay?
Oh, yes, thank you for bringing that up, um, yes, so ship, uh, Marjorie met with um the ship's new um administrator. And um it looks like um. You know, we're, we're, we're able to proceed, Woodard and Curran um is putting together or has put together that application, when I talked with Brent on Monday, he said they had everything they needed from us. And um it, I, he didn't say they, they were, they were ready to submit the application, but they should be. Um, you know, and I'll check with him when I meet with him um next Monday, that, that, that's moving forward, but it, it sounded like. You know, it's, it's, it's moving forward, so that's better than where we were before.
Marjorie's last update, she just met with him that day or the day before.
Yeah, he seemed, he seemed pretty positive about it.
I just didn't know.
Uh, just that the application is pretty much complete, it, it should be this, you know.
Good, that's good to know that they finally hired someone to do that after.
I know. That was like six months plus later, after we sent them our initial notice, so.
That was, that's all I had.
Any other questions or thoughts or concerns or?
I was approached by. A couple. A business owner downtown and they raised some concerns about the project. And I'm just making sure that they are gonna be meeting with Wood, Woodard and Curran soon. Saw the email that they're still trying to set that up. Is that gonna happen? Shortly, I hope.
Yeah, yeah, Marjorie, do you want to say more about that?
Yeah, I mean, we, we've had ongoing conversations and right now, at this um. Point in time, um. You're talking about Andy, you know, he wants to, he wants to meet with the engineers, I mean, we did a. Uh, question and answer and um. We've had um meetings with, I've had meetings with him, person on, you know, one-on-one, Gabe has had meetings with him one-on-one, I feel like we're. Um, trying to address his concerns, but he specifically asked for a meeting with the engineers and we're trying to set that up, but there's. Um, three people that would be beneficial for him to talk to, so I mean, you know how. Difficult it is to get um those kinds of meetings together, so we're certainly working on it.
Okay.
Um, I guess what I think about um is. You know, what is the end goal, I think. I'm not, we're not a hundred percent sure what Andy's. Uh, and Aaron's goal is, I don't think at this point that we'd be prepared to substantially change the design, I mean, that would be. You know, backtracking in a sense. Uh, but we certainly, I feel like we've listened to him, we've talked, we've really tried hard to answer his questions. Um. But that's the juncture we're at right now, I. You know, and of course you want to address everybody's concerns and try to. Answer their questions to the best of our ability.
Right.
Um, but you know, we do have engineers um that are working on this, and I guess the point that one of them um. Made to me was that they're not, they're not gonna put their stamp on something that they think isn't gonna work.
Right.
So, um, there's that, um, so. I'm not, I'm certainly, I feel like we've. Um, tried very hard to listen to the concerns and try to answer the questions to the best of our ability.
Right.
Can I ask at this late stage, I mean, with all the coffee. Meetings with stakeholders and whatnot, the, the concerns. Now that, what are the concerns, could I, can you answer that?
Um, well, Andy had questions about. First of all, generally, you know, how is this project addressing sea level rise, and I think what we've been trying to. Um, and you know, Gabe, you can jump in if you want, what we've been trying to discuss is that this. This isn't a specific, specific to sea level rise, this isn't going to, this isn't a wall, you know.
Right.
We're not raising buildings, um, we're, we're addressing stormwater, which will help us deal with. You know, somewhat with sea level rise, but it's not, uh, it's not that big um discussion or big project that. You know, maybe is the next five to ten years discussion, what are we going to do about Main Street? Eventually, people feel, you know, we've been told that it will be underwater, but that's not this project, we want to address. Our um aging water pipes, we want to address stormwater. Uh, our stormwater drains, update that, we want to do our sidewalks, I mean, you've seen the plans and are familiar with what we're doing. Um, so that's. Um.
And he's seen the plants.
One general, pardon?
He's had to have seen the plants as a.
Yes, so that's his general concern is how is this addressing sea level rise, and we've tried to answer that question, you know. You know, maybe he feels, feels like it should be addressing sea level rise more specifically, but that's not what this project is.
Right.
And then more um specific to his um thought process is that he, he feels like. So part of the stormwater system is going to drain to the pond and part of that system will drain out to the harbor. And the catch basins that are right in front of um. Krieman Store. He feels like they should drain to the pond, and we've tried to address his concerns and answer his questions as to why. They're not gonna drain to the pond, they're gonna drain to the harbor. Um, and we've had uh several conversations with him and. The engineers have tried to answer his questions, he has questions specific to um. Highest H A T, highest annual tide.
Yeah, app annual, sorry.
Yeah, and uh the mean high water, um, those kinds of questions, I defer to the engineers because, you know, it's not my expertise.
Yep, no, I, I, some of the. If I can try, I'll try to boil down what their concerns were, at least what I gathered, they're concerned that. If. The stormwater drains out into the harbor instead of into the pond. And there's no baffles at the end, that there could be flooding from the harbor at a really high tide into their property, and they're also lowering. The road in front of their property, whereas the road now kind of acts as somewhat of a. Buffer in case there ever was a really high tide and it came in from the parking lot area. So if you lower it, then you're actually making it more susceptible to flooding.
But there's also gonna be a six-inch curb that's not there.
Okay, so again, I agree, because a lot of the questions and their concerns, I, I'm not an engineer, I don't. I can't answer these questions, so as long as they are gonna meet with the engineers. I think, hopefully that will go a long way towards answering their questions and maybe. They'll feel better about the project forward, but. I agree, there's too much work has been done to this point to drastically change things. But I don't really dismiss.
Of course not, and I, I feel like, personally, I feel like we've done a good job, you know, meeting with him and.
You have, you have.
But, yeah.
And I'd just say to D W that um we are, we have. Making plans to meet and as Marjorie said, it's really just coordinating with the engineers, so I did uh reach back out to Andy um yesterday and today. Um, to say we're, we're still working on that meeting day, but hopefully, um, you know, I'll, I'll be able to get a date from them. Um, this week, so we can have that meeting and um move forward, I will say, I think it is. I know it's hard for us, you know, to be thinking about the what's next when we haven't even started this project and also. Just to be thinking about, here we are, putting all of our time and energy and money into this project, which is critical infrastructure that needs to be done regardless of. Um, anything else, uh, but um, you know, people are, people are asking questions about the like, the what's. Next, or why aren't we raising the road two feet, well, we can't do that because we can't raise buildings, and so. This is, you know, this has been the crux, so the question of like, well, how could we raise buildings leads to. Well, we, the town can't raise buildings because they, we don't own those buildings, we could help facilitate conversations with. You know, about options, the town could, the town could do a scoping grant that would look at. A variety of different options for Main Street, we could look at buyouts, we could look at raising buildings, we could look at other alternatives. I mean, just to have that information to start those conversations, but that's not, that's not a tomorrow problem, that's a many years ahead problem, but it is good. You know, it takes like years and years and years and years and years to address something like that, so. I think it's good people are asking these questions and along those lines, like the Sea Level Rise Committee and I are like. Talking about putting together, um, just something very simple that could go with the downtown project materials that talks about. Where are we building resilience in this project, because we are, we're addressing a lot of issues, the road is being raised in some areas. Um, there i- there is um a more consistent um like buffer with the, the curbing and the sidewalks um elevated in different areas and. There are those um resilience components that are happening with the climate adaptation plan for the sewer. Um, there's all sorts of, you know, things that are happening that will be huge improvements, it's just, we're not, like Marjorie said, this isn't. A seawall, this isn't raising buildings, this isn't relocating Main Street, and that's never what the downtown master plan said this project would be. It was like, we're gonna do what we can within the confines of what the town is able to do. And I have looked into options with different grants that can be used for um private infrastructure. And um I did talk with Andy about those possibilities, um, there's definitely, you know, alternatives, but. Like, to, they're not, there's, those are likely not gonna happen tomorrow unless a private individual wants to raise their building themselves and finds that funding. And in, in which case. You know, maybe we'd have to make an adjustment to the design if they did it tomorrow, but um. You know, in the future, we, we would have to, you know, figure out how that would be accommodated, but. Yeah, we are, I, I feel like we'll continue to work um toward uh clarity around. What the resilience components of this project are and hopefully to find solutions that work, I just don't think in the E D A project. Portion of the project, there are, there is a sea level rise solution, um, that's going to um. Address the particular concerns.
Okay. Alright, I just wanted to make sure I brought it up.
Thank you, D W.
No, thank you, I appreciate it. Alright, any other questions for Gabe? Alright, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Have a good night. Alright. Move on to eight B. Woodard, Woodard and Curran update, I'm having trouble saying that.
Really working on in grounds part. Draft concept plan for grounds part, I have no idea.
All I know is that they had a meeting with the um.
Legion?
Oh, that's just, um.
Dave?
Dave, yeah. About doing some things there.
That'd be great.
Well, I think doesn't only those stormwater things have to go down to there or not? Is that just the sewer thing that's already going up through there?
There's a sewer out there that goes through.
I kind of remember that. Remembering me saying he had ideas of how to make it look better, but I don't know where the money's gonna come from.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have a lot of details about that.
But nothing, they're still working on the transportation line. Get your bit out of.
That's like a.
Okay. Alright. Anybody questions? Alright, we'll move on to eight C, library trustee appointment.
Uh, I received an email from uh Hyata Cord, Corduwan, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that. Corduwan.
Corduwan.
Okay.
It's kind of a strange, uh, different name.
Um. She is expressing interest in joining the Vinyl Haven Public. Library Board of Trustees, I understand there's a current opening with the new director leaving the board, that's Jennifer Wadley that we hired as our new library directors. So of course she wouldn't be on the trustees. Uh, as you know, I owned and operated a bookstore in Vermont for nearly twelve years and have extensive knowledge and skills. In the book world, I'm an avid reader and love sharing my passion for reading and books. I feel I could be an asset to the library and the community. And there is, so Jennifer, uh, Jen Wadley's term was just uh to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I'm making motion, we are up for it. I ought to the library trustees for the. Term end in June, very twenty twenty-three. That's happened. All those in favor, I'm not trying the last name. Alright. Move on to now, old business model, aquaculture development moratorium ordinance. Go ahead, Marjorie.
Going from the school.
I know.
Kind of dug into reading this um ordinance, and one of the things that stuck out to me was the um. Additional burden of this is gonna put on the planning board, I don't know if you read that section or not. Um. I just wanted to point out that um there's quite a process that it puts um, puts onto the local planning boards.
Yeah, a lot of that stuff should be put into like a comprehensive plan, you know. Like what the town actually wants and then you make the plan. You know, the planning board would have to make all those changes to. Update some of the policies, wouldn't they, or not?
But they would be involved with the permanent period, wouldn't they?
And if you have the comprehensive plan, say.
I mean, there's a lot of questions that come to my mind, if, if. There's rules about what the planning board is supposed to do within this aquaculture ordinance. You know, then does that have to go through the planning commission, I mean, I, there is just things swirling around in my. Mind about, well, I guess what you people are talking about, does it have to be part of the comprehensive plan?
That's kind of what I was wondering, because I've. Where a lot of the planning guides originate from.
Where a lot of the planning guys originate from is like what the town sees as the. Well, the overall picture of everything, right? I remember we just redid that. And uh must be ten years ago now when Andy first came over here, that was his. When he was in the, you know, when he was a fellow, wasn't that what he did? Was it? That was probably ten years ago now. Anyway.
Oh, boy.
I bet it was at least ten years ago.
I think it was.
Well, he went.
I think here in two thousand two.
Yeah. So I mean. I mean, I don't know if that, that's something that needs to go on that, or if it's just something that the planning commission needs to write rules for.
Well, this is, this is an ordinance in and of itself, but I mean, when I really dug in and read through it. You know, um, that's something that kind of stuck out to me that. That burden that it places on our planning board and. How does that fit into our comprehensive plan? I bet it wasn't a specific thought that I had, but how does it fit into our land use ordinance and? Does, you know, does the plan, does the planning commission need to get involved in this? You know, those are kind of the thoughts that came. Up when I read that section. It's a quite a long section about. What the um planning board would need to do.
But the planning board doesn't actually set the rules that guide them, correct? The planning commission.
Planning commission.
To us, and then we have to take them to.
Yeah.
So or more be on the planning commission to write some of those rules that the planning board would have to follow, right?
It's pretty specific.
Yeah, no, I know about the sizes and different thing.
Yeah.
Didn't seem that overwhelming. Well. We gotta remember that all of our commissions and boards are all volunteers, so I don't want to put too much on them, but same time. Is it worth having a meeting with the representatives from them to get their report fully?
Well, I I emailed with Banner. I didn't have a, you know, face to face conversation with him and I sent this to him. And, you know, his comment was, well, you know, if it comes to be, then this is our job, so, you know, we would. Have to do it.
But if you recall, they, they didn't like the fact that they, we asked them to go to places to. Look at these places for, yeah, and they thought that was um too much, yeah, we were pushing the envelope on that one. So if they feel that that's gonna be a burden. What are they gonna do if this was passed? That's gonna be really the burden on them.
With the other. I mean.
I mean.
On that particular issue. I think we felt it was a good idea because there were, there were few and far between those particular permits, right? Yeah, so. These are the same. Right, how many, how many aquaculture leases are we actually gonna see? Well, these are more for the shoresides. Okay. I mean, I don't know. I wouldn't think we'd see very many of, but we haven't.
I personally, I don't, I don't see the need to.
Yeah, I don't know if we need this.
Accepted ordinance.
At this time, I mean, but I think we do. We need, we need to.
It would seem that.
Bring them all to the plane, all of what we want, planning, what. Provisions to say we need to bring them up, I don't. I think we should. You know, the planet, like the planning committee brought us all those new rules about the public, the business, whatever, I can't. Home occupation business, living there, right? And then we said, yeah, we'll take these to the. They should maybe take a gander at these things and see what.
Well, Banner has.
Well, he's not, he's on the planning, he's on the planning board, I'm talking about Wes and uh.
He, oh, excuse me.
Yeah, there you go. That's what I was trying to think.
Banner comes to the planning commission meetings. We have a planning commission meeting tomorrow at four o'clock with. Matt Eddie, as you recall, he's assisting us with the land use ordinance revisions. Um, Banner does come to those meetings, just, I mean, doesn't. You know, he doesn't need to, but he, he likes to participate.
Well, maybe they should, maybe then Matt can help. Can look at it and.
Isn't that how we have to do it though? Don't we have to have him come from the planning commission? Or we, I guess we could tell the planning commission. Well, the town, these are the rules we want to, right?
You can bring something to town meeting on your own.
Well, they haven't gotten back to us yet on the other ordinances. That we act, that we talked about, right?
Yeah.
Well, should they take a look at this? Have Matthew Eddie look at this and see what kind of an opinion he might have.
That's what you'd like, yeah.
I mean, he seemed like he was pretty. Knowledgeable and certainly wanted to be helpful to the.
Oh, yeah.
So I think he'd be. Be helpful.
Is it too late to get on the agenda tomorrow?
Well, let me just discuss it briefly with. Worse, since, I mean, they're. There, I know that they feel like the things that they, the amendments that they want have been delayed, delayed, delayed.
Right.
So they're feeling a little, you know, so to throw something new at them would be like, well, can we just finish what? We have right now.
Right, that, that was kind of what I was getting there.
I mean, we could kind of. Put it on their list, so to speak. I, I mean, I don't know, for lack of a better way to put it, I.
I mean, they have been working on those revisions, so I do think we need to get through that first, but. I guess I don't feel this is as pressing as maybe others. I'm not saying we can't bring it up and we don't discuss it with the planning commission, but. I, they have been working on things that we need to do. Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not against discussing it with them, but. I don't want to put more on them while they start working on things we asked them to do already, I guess is my point. So I mean, if we do want to do this ordinance thing, we have to bring it up and then we look. We'd look foolish if the planning commission came to those meetings and said, well, we've never seen any of this. Right. Is it? Or their first time hearing about it was when we have a public. That's what I mean. We should at least, we should at least give them the opportunity before we have. Yes, I'm not saying that we need to run it by them first, I. You know.
Even if they just. Have them look at it when Matthew Eddie will see it.
I, I don't disagree with, I agree with that too. I just think they already got an agenda for tomorrow and they, they're focused on one thing.
But we don't have to rush right into.
No. So I guess if it could be. At least mentioned. That we're considering something like this, we'd like their input at some point. That would be, that would be. They don't have to look. They know them, they, they know some of the ordinances. I mean, they know way better than we know. They definitely know better than I do. Some of that stuff might be redundant. We might not need some of that. Exactly. Maybe.
And in this?
I mean, some of the things might not be allowed under current fine, finding zone.
Some of what things.
The things that are in the. In that, in the ordinance, the moratorium ordinance. Yeah. Are they all allowed now or are some of them not allowed? I don't know.
The pieces of this would be covered under something else.
Yeah, or not allowed to be, or not allowed to be. Right, that's what I don't know. I don't look. Cross reference that stuff, because sometimes some things are already not allowed that are allowed in other towns, right?
One of the um, the right word is awkward. I, I guess I'm gonna use. One of the awkward things about this is that David Callen is our attorney. So if we want it to be reviewed, we would probably have to find somebody else to review it, because he wrote this.
Right. Okay. Yeah, he just charged us for an hour's labor and said, it looks great.
Yeah, he wrote it, so it's, it's great.
Right, yeah, no, that's what I mean. If we ask him, we wouldn't ask him to look over it because it wouldn't make sense, yeah. Maybe we should just ask them. I mean, I don't think it's anything that we have to do. If we can have that as something that we try and figure out this winter, over the course of the winter, it would be good to. Yeah. Just run it by them and then come up with a plan of what, if they have anything that they say, if not, then we'll just go. Or go along with what we think we maybe should do.
One thing I find interesting about this is that. Marjorie and I were talking yesterday about Casco Bay. They've got, they've had a lot of leases um presented to them and given, I guess. Have been awarded the leases in other places like Southern Maine, you know, basically where Crystal Canyon's coming from, right? That we have, the Penox Stop Bay has had very little.
Yeah.
Exposure to people trying to, you know, applications for big leases. And I don't, I'm not saying that that might not happen, but it just seems that. Maybe this isn't the, an area where people are gonna be looking.
Right, they're trying to build that big onshore one in Belfast.
Right, that's, that's a offshore one though.
Right, but it's gonna affect the water.
But it's a totally different ball of wax as to what was ordinance.
But the biggest one that they're fighting is Down East, yeah, aquaculture. That's the big salmon pens down. Most everything that's been from here to the west are all either kelp and seaweed farms or oyster and scallops. And stuff like that. They haven't tried to put any big fish pens in down, right? Those are all, those are all, those are all over towards the Canadian border because one of the biggest companies operates out of New Brunswick, so. They own all the stuff in the state of Maine, so that's why they run them down there. But what did I see? They, oh, they just bought a big, they just bought all the pogue boats in Virginia, so it's not like they're just sticking around to it.
Yeah, you see a lot of those salmon pens down east.
All right, we'll move on to nine B purchasing policy.
I think this is um, I think this is what you want. Um, and I don't know if you wanna take some time to read it and vote on it at the next meeting, but I. I feel like this is what you have asked me to put together.
And basically the informal bidding process and the money was all we changed, wasn't it? Basically.
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't remember.
I mean, we didn't really change a lot from the first draft that you showed us last week, did we? Really, the, the section five. I think, right. And I just see what I was, this is what I was thinking I was gonna do.
I just want to be sure if, if you'd like to take some time to read it over and vote on it next time, it's, it's up to you.
I was fine with what you had changed.
Everybody in agreement? They want to just vote on it now? I'm, I'm good. Do you have to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't, well, I didn't write anything up, but it seems like it would be.
Say we just wanna want to act the first.
So.
Put a thing on the back of the date. I make a motion that we accept. The updated purchasing policy. As amended and presented.
And will be attached to the minutes. And then do you want to just sign the, sign one copy?
All right, sign this one. All right, just all of the paper. Okay, here we go.
You don't want, doesn't matter.
All right.
You want, you want to keep yours and.
Sure, hand it around, there we go.
Then you have to see your records.
So busy.
I know, looking at the uh, I'm looking at the checks, yeah, it looks like it's been busy.
Oh, it's a transfer.
Oh, I need to um. Transfer some money from Indian National Bank over to the first, that's what that is.
Give that back, that way I guess be easier to be trying to slide it over. Has the interest rate on our just regular checking deposit gone up? I mean.
Yeah, point six five.
That's it.
It's gone up.
Yeah, from point.
Six five.
Yeah, but you think it'd be higher than that with the amount of money we, we still have in some place. Cameron National.
They don't, or they don't.
First to get more money. Their savings is point zero two percent. But I moved, I, back in May, I moved all her money to a different savings account, different bank, and that was a two point four percent. So not any better. Two point four versus point zero two. Oh, it's a lot better. Oh, I always think that you're saying it was point two. No, point zero two, up to two point four, it's a huge difference. Yeah, I know.
Done for a regular.
Regular savings account.
Mine's at two point three five, I think.
Where's, what bank is that?
Barclays.
Oh, Discover is two point three.
Discover is another good one, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Interesting.
So, that's. Cameron Nationals.
Yeah.
I'll never do business with them.
I got my money out of there, so.
I'll never do business with them. Anyway, we'll move on to nine C selectmen's goals.
Oh, I just, this is a, a little um sheet that I used to use, you know, to do some. You know, just to document what goals were for a current year. And, and it's simple, but it's just, to me, it's. Um, just straightforward and easy to read and I can add or subtract things. That you would like to see me work on. Um, I know, if you like it, we can use it. It's not, certainly not complex in any way.
I think it's much easier.
Anyway, you could just give it some thought and if there's things that you see that you'd like to add or you'd like to discuss or. Um, it's just a way to have some things listed that. You would like to prioritize. I mean, some things are obvious. Obviously, we're working on the downtown project. Obviously, we're working on the transfer station. But if there are other things that.
Nice to see the sewer ordinance get off.
I have a question. How is the? Mowing contract, how did that go this summer?
Well, I just, I have a lot of complaints. Recently, and I had.
Contractors, so I was wondering how that went.
Yeah. I had discussions um with. Um, the Public Works Director and Cemetery Trustees and, you know, other people that have discussed. Issues with me, so I did bring Jensen in and talk, I had, I've had two or three. Long conversations with him and I think part of the problem has been communication. I think that our assumption was that. He knew all about all the properties that he was supposed to maintain because he had worked with David Brown, but I don't necessarily think that's true. Um, I've made an appointment with him to um locate. I mean, he doesn't even know where some of these uh small private cemeteries are. Now, the only responsibility we have is the veterans' graves. But still, it's a responsibility that, you know, uh, we need to talk about and. We need to uh make, I need to make sure that I communicate with him. What his responsibilities are and also if I have a complaint come in, I need to be very specific about. What the complaint is so that he can address it. And that's what it says in the contract. That, you know, if we, if I have a problem or if there's a problem, then I'm to address it with him orally. And but then if it continues, um, you know, there are provisions for termination, but, you know. I think the contract allows, uh, has a provision for. Discussing what the problems are and, and giving him an opportunity to make it right.
Well, for the most part, he's done a pretty decent job. I mean, around town, everything seems that I see things to be mowed. Right, somewhat regulated. I see him out raking stuff up, believes after the last couple of weeks. Our Humming Cemetery looks great right now. They've done a great job down there. Yeah, no, I'm just saying.
Yeah, he just did that.
I was just more curious because.
I was just more curious because there was a pretty substantial increase in the cost of that contract, so.
So what happens when there is no mowing to be done? He just gets paid through the winter?
That's how David Brown.
While retrieval's down, he's supposed to go clean that up too.
Know that?
It's in the contract, the limbs and stuff like that was all on that.
Um, I was at Carvers a couple of weeks ago when the grass was very tall. Where I, where my family plot is. So.
Matter of, you know, I had a question about the, uh, trash removal at the cemetery. I know in the past, I've seen the town truck down there doing it, and there was a question in the cemetery. Uh, the guy who takes care of the mowing, or is the town still doing it?
I still need to clarify that, cause Jensen and I had a few conversations about it, and if you look at the contract, that. This talks about removing debris, and he kind of took that to be. Um, you know, if there's sticks and debris around, or if there was actually some trash, that he would. Place that in the trash barrel, but he didn't, he didn't think that it was his responsibility. Not, cause he doesn't want to do it, because he's, he said that. Um, the Public Works Department had always picked it up, so I need to clarify that. I don't, yeah, it's.
Cause I know we put a lot of stuff in there, we pick up around there that is amazing, how much trash there is at the cemetery.
So, um, I mean, one of my problems is that I don't have the time to go around and supervise him every day of the week. And, you know, so that begs, who is his supervisor, and Millie, or our Public Works Director. Is in the contract as there's me and the Public Works Director, so. I think it's just an ongoing conversation that we need to have about, okay, who's gonna. Keep track of what he's doing and how well it's being done, and how often, and. You know, are we, are we, you know, getting everything, um, maintained, you know, appropriately?
Well, I keep a close eye on Cummins.
Well, good, you can report to me.
They've been doing a pretty good job down there.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions? Sorry, I can't read that. What were you, what were you mentioning on the status?
Oh, yeah, we need to.
This transfer station project, I really hope they can get us something before the end of the year, so we can get this out the bit, cause that.
What I have a feeling that even if we do, we might not get someone, they might all be all booked up for the springtime, so.
We can get pricing on it.
Yeah, that would be.
We need to at least get pricing.
Is anything, uh, does this have anything to do with the license?
License?
Of the lack thereof?
What does what, does what?
Does the, um, fact that it's taking longer to get this going, does it have anything to do with? The town?
I don't get that impression, um, we got a sample operations and maintenance manual from the North Haven. Transfer Station, and, um, Millie, you know. Pirated it and, you know, uh, up, uh, how would I say, amended it to fit Vinyl Haven. So, um, that's, you know, pretty much complete, she completed that and sent it off to the engineers for their review. And that's part of getting the license, um, I haven't heard that that's. That's just part of the delay, but I can check in. Okay.
Any other questions, comments on nine C?
Um, I just have one more question about, uh, number six. With the school, Washington School, the landscaping, what are we gonna do about landscaping? Because it definitely needs to have some professional help over here, I mean, it's just a question, we don't have to go into great detail, but.
I don't know exactly what I'm gonna do, well, one of the first things I'm doing, I was working with Chuck Gadsack. And he's, he marked out some trees in the back that we can cut down. Um, and, but I do need as, um. One or two items down, I'm looking for that appropriation to be carried forward, so that I can. Really dig into some of these projects, I mean, I think I have enough to do. Um, the cutting on the back here, I think it will put more, uh, sunlight on the back of the building. Um, but there's just, there's so much that needs to be done here. Um, you know, interior, exterior painting, the clabberds are rotting. Um, the landscaping, you know, I'm just trying to. I'm trying to.
I know, it's hard.
Deal with it, um. You know, one thing at a time, I keep thinking that I'm gonna come up and try to, um, prune some of those horrible bushes, but. I never, I never get through it.
Well, that'll be up, that'll be up for discussion then.
Um, yeah, I mean, if we appropriate, you know, carry that money forward. Then I'll have more money to, um, do some of those projects.
Alright, gonna move on to nine D review selectman bylaws, selectmen's bylaws, remote participation.
So, um. Donald and, um, Pam and I got together and reviewed the bylaws. And that's the red line version that you have or had, I don't know, and then Jake asked about the. You know, don't we have to do something about reboot, remote board meetings? And there, I did find a sample, it's called remote participation in public proceedings policy. And this is quite new, this is from August and from October. Uh, fourth, that Maine Municipal put this up as a sample policy. And what I read is that, um, so. Post-COVID, the legislature is allowing, you know, be, pre-COVID, you know, you weren't. As a board of selectmen, you weren't really allowed to meet remotely, but now they're just, they're saying. If you have a policy, you can kind of make your own rules, you know, if you're limiting it to, you know, if somebody's really sick. You know, or you can say at, um, how do they put it?
At each member's own.
Yeah, at each member's own convenience, so it's up to us, I, I'm thinking that. Um, it should be a separate policy, at least that's where my gut reaction is going, instead of trying to incorporate it into these bylaws. Um.
I just wanted to make sure we can still do what I knew that.
Yeah, I mean, you mentioned that Andy had said something about, maybe he knew that this was, um, you know, coming, coming up. That there would, you know, I wasn't aware of it.
Um, state of emergency ended that. That might go back to some other thing, but apparently they said we can do it, we should.
Yeah.
We shouldn't make it too hard, we should just make it on our own convenience, if we have to. Yeah, for some reason, we shouldn't say, just if you travel and are sick, it should be. If someone wants to, they can, we don't have to really have any excuse.
I would just say that.
I would say, that would be my.
If, if you're on the island and you're well enough that you try to attend in person as much as possible, that's, that would just be my suggestion, but otherwise, I've. To the agreement, at, at your convenience.
But I guess, um.
You can attend a moment.
I'll prepare something then as a separate policy.
Yeah.
And then, um, what about the? So these. The bylaws, uh, um, as I said, Pam and Donald and I went through them one day. And have you, have you had a chance to look at those revisions?
Say, I haven't, was it in the email?
Um, well, it's been presented previously, so maybe it wasn't in.
It was from the last meeting, I was from here, I think it was from the meeting I missed.
I can put it in again, I can put the red line version in to a packet again.
Lots of changes in life.
You made more since the last, yeah, I, I do remember seeing that the last thing, there wasn't a kind of red line in the.
Yeah, there were a few things that really made sense, we had not even thought of, but I think we need to get back together and. Try to get, get around it.
I just wanted to, you know, address the question of the remote meeting, so, uh, I'll put that together.
What, you think we did, we need to do more?
I think there were some things in the last meeting that we, that we addressed, I talked about here. That I certainly hadn't taken into account when we had our meeting, and I'm, you know.
Oh, I, well, I just, um, all I had was the remote meeting issue, there was something else.
I can't, who brought it up in here, but it made sense to me at the time, but I didn't, I get to give my notes.
Yeah, I'm not ready to discuss, I don't remember what they were, and I don't mind it, so if we.
But there are a couple.
I think it, I have it in my truck, if it's the same exact one from the last meeting.
From the last packet, I just didn't know.
Oh, yeah, no, I have, I have one, but if, if we're gonna, I mean, I just remember there not being a lot of red lines on.
No.
Much stuff.
Well, my notes from the last meeting say.
Yeah, we changed.
What about hybrid meetings?
Right.
Do we need to put something in about that? Is it illegal to have hybrid meetings? Um, what about, what about recording meetings?
That was the other one. Yeah, that was the other thing I didn't know.
They're on, uh, YouTube.
No, but I didn't know how long we have to keep them.
Yeah.
Oh.
That was how, that was my question, like, do we have to keep them on a cloud somewhere or a thumb drive, you know, a month or?
Well.
Six years or what is it?
Yes, you recall, that's where this one is, it's, it's on the cloud.
Right, but eventually, eventually, I'll say that, right.
I don't know.
Yeah, like, I don't know how Facebook keeps anything, or if it's just until you get your memory full, and then they delete the last thing, so. Do we need to go on there and store them somewhere to be?
Right.
Do we need to have like an external?
Storage there is on the town's iCloud account, I mean, if it's updated. Monthly, or if they buy storage.
Right.
With the, the.
But I'm just asking, like, how long we actually have to keep it, cause if it's only.
I don't know.
If it's only for a year and they just delete it after a year, then we don't have to worry about it, but if it, you need to keep them for three, that was my, I think that was my question about that.
How long do you have to keep them?
Right, how long do we have to make them available to the public, like the recording? Cause we have the minutes, they, they're saved for a hundred years or so in the background, but. How long do we have to keep the digital copy? Cause that's something new that we've only just started doing.
Wouldn't it be? Regulated by like the Freedom of Information Act, I would think.
I'll look it up.
Okay.
Thank you, that was, I do remember talking about that.
No, that's, cause yeah, cause we wondered how long we have to keep them if they record onto the cloud.
We have to keep them forever.
Or we have to keep them forever.
Five years?
There's gotta be a limit, but what is?
I mean, if we want to keep your financial record for seven years, it's not gonna be any longer than that, right, but we have the minutes, yeah.
You have a, a written record.
You have to keep the digital record.
Hundreds of years of records in the vault, so I mean, I don't know what.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was just curious to make sure we didn't run afoul on that part of it.
Alright. Ten, new business, Washington School, carry forward, I think we all.
I gave you a memo on that. Possible.
I get it.
I'll share.
Technically the towns, but.
Yeah, right.
Say, I make a motion that we move to carry forward the thirty-one thousand five hundred from the twenty-one, twenty-two budget for Washington School improvements. To include but not limited to a new generator, interior painting, exterior repairs and painting of various landscaping projects.
Second, all's in favor. Alright.
I mean, we talked about this last time, we don't really need to have.
We wanted it, we wanted, when we appropriated it last year, we were hoping to get that stuff, some of that stuff done, obviously.
And.
Alright, ten B job descriptions.
Uh, Millie, uh, updated the truck driver laborer job description and the, um.
Transfer station.
Transfer station foreman and transfer station attendant. Um, if you need some time to look at these, we can do it next time, or if you'd like to just.
So we just have to prove that updated versions.
Yes.
Seems like she thinks we're gonna do that other one, oh, it was revised in October twenty-two, it says. On the transfer station.
Reviewed, it's.
Okay, yeah, not approved.
I would like to add something to essential duties and responsibilities. For the, which, which one, for the transfer station attendant.
So should we do these and bring it back for next meeting?
Probably, if we have any thing we wanna add, let's do that.
And we'll move on to eleven, report our town manager.
Just got a couple of things, I didn't really get anything in writing, certainly if you have any questions, I don't know. Um, I've still been trying to, uh, contact. Uh, Carrie Waters about the. Um, not Scott Island air lease, I mean, the last one that was signed was. Um, expired in December of twenty nineteen. We haven't had anything since, and she's kind of gone silent on me, I don't know. If you have any recollections of things that happened, I know that after Kevin died, there was.
Big proposal of all kinds and stuff, and we, I thought we hashed out that when you signed a new contract sometime, cause we said we'd take over part of it, but she never signed it, we never agreed to it. I remember talking about it though.
Yeah.
I went through the minutes of morning, I can't find the final.
Well, I think Andy was supposed to go back to her and say, well, cause she wanted a whole slew of things for us to take over, and we said, alright, we can do. A and B.
There's like the updated fee schedule and.
Right, but we said she wanted us to take over maintain, maintenance and stuff, and we said, well, that we did own it, that we would.
Right, we, we did things we felt were reasonable and, and our goal, there's some other things, just like, no, we're not gonna subsidize a private.
Right.
Right.
That they were asking, they wanted us to build a huge building up there too, right, or maybe not huge, but.
Storage.
Right, well, it was fairly decent sized, I can't remember what it was, but we didn't agree to, we just agreed to, you know.
And then they wanted subsidies for their price increases.
They wanted us to pay for a lot of.
Yeah, maybe we should, we should definitely.
I'll just keep trying, I.
I just, I thought after that, we had to, we signed it, but I guess, yeah, obviously we didn't.
Elizabeth found it, um, so I have this draft, this was from September fifteenth, twenty twenty. Elizabeth helped me find this, and there is a draft, but.
Between the town and.
That was right after Kevin, and that was the proposed.
We agreed to after she sent all the things. Could you, could you send that to, could you send out that to all of us? The proposal that we had, just so we, I can refresh my memory on.
Yes, I do remember, yeah, cause they came to us with a new agreement with a bunch of things, and we said no.
And we came back at them.
Obviously, they didn't respond to it. So.
I mean, there's just, there's so much, um, anyway, I'm trying to keep up. Um, and I also have gotten in touch with and have contacted Lisa Lewis, George Lewis's daughter. And, um, I'm hopeful about that, I mean, she seems pretty positive about it, and she. Asked me to send her the last lease we had with George, and, um. She was gonna speak with their, the family attorney, so I'm, I'm also hopeful about that, um. Getting that back in place. Um.
When was the last one of those signed?
If we.
Couple of years ago.
We didn't have one this year.
So, so the one for, uh, we don't have one in effect, uh, for July, the July. First, twenty twenty-two, yeah. We had one previous to that, so it's not as old, it's not as, um. I don't want that to hold outdated as.
So this, this is.
It's only overdue, or whatever you call it.
This current year.
So, yeah, we don't have an agreement there in place, and we don't have one. For the airport. What does that mean from a liability standpoint? I'm guessing more cause.
Well, we have, um, we have airport insurance that Andy procured, uh, it was like a three-year policy. So that's in place, and we do have a current lawsuit.
Right.
Against me and you and.
Right.
Um.
A civil.
I don't know. Everybody under the sun.
Yes, that at the last. Yeah. It's from, um.
The accident.
Julie and Billy.
Alright, yes, um.
So, um, yeah, I'm working with our insurer and, uh, our attorney, but mostly it's. It's with our, uh, insurance company.
And there's no, there's no update on that at the moment?
They're just investigating, you know, I had, we had to send out, um. They're just investigating, you know, I had, we had to send out um a bunch of uh documents. You know, and answer a lot of questions and.
So because the town owns the airstrip, but basically it should be of Penobscot Air. Was, was.
Well, it's R E M Ts too.
Right.
Well, we have insurance on the airstrip, but then we have it. It's only one company leases it from us, that's how it is in insurance, so there's probably sixteen insurances going back and forth following this like that.
But I don't think that.
I don't think that recludes.
No.
Anything, but I'm not a lawyer.
Nope.
So not having an agreement with Penobscot Island Air.
I don't know how that's gonna play out with this, you know, I don't.
But not having one in place right now, what is, does that really, what does that mean for the town anyway? Does that affect the insurance?
No, cause that's on the airstrip.
Right.
Well, what I think about, I mean, I always used to be able to, you know, um. I haven't, since I've been back, gotten any of these calls, but occasionally you get a call from people that wanna fly in and out of there. So I always used to be able to say, well, we lease the strip to Penobscot Island there. And the agreement is that we don't allow anybody else to fly in and out of there. So that kind of begs the question, oh, how would I answer that question now? I mean, I'd still say you can't fly in there, but I don't really have any.
We don't allow private aircraft to land there, how about that?
Well, that's, that's just one of the things that kind of came up in my mind, cause that was always my answer, well, we just, we leased the strip to Penobscot Island there.
So I guess that is one of the drawbacks to not having a lease is. We don't have that to fall back on if someone did ask to fly the private plane onto the strip.
I guess so.
But yeah, but I guess.
I still don't, I still wouldn't give anybody permission.
I mean, it's silk town property, it's still.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Doesn't, does the insurance say anything about private aircraft?
Our insurance policy, I haven't read it in great detail, I mean, you know how insurance policies, they're about. A hundred pages thick, but um, I mean, I could certainly look at it.
Just, yeah, just curious.
I think it's cheaper where we don't allow just anyone to come in, where they just lease it out to one company and they have their own attorney.
But we're not, but apparently we're not leasing it to anyone.
Right, but we still have the insurance that was that one company to fly in and out, I'm sure they're listed on.
Right.
Our insurance has the one carrier that can fly in and out of the airport, like down in Stonington, any, anyone can land on that airstrip.
Yeah, that seems like a.
They have a book that you sign in, there isn't even anyone that works there, when I ever I phone in, I just, they just fly Penobscot Island, it flies me in. Lands and takes off, I don't know exactly how it works, but they always go inside and sign in a little book, like there's like a little FAA book and they. That's how it works down there, but they have a longer paved runway than we have. So their insurance is probably a lot more than ours, cause they let.
Anybody and everyone, right.
Do you have any questions for me, um? Oh, the, on the parking ordinance, um, I put something in the wind that we would be discussing this. At the next meeting, so people would have an opportunity to weigh in on the changes that we wanna make.
I have changes, did you make them at the last meeting?
So the proposal is, yeah, you had like a, a parking ordinance.
So I don't, I don't think I, did I get that? Yeah, that you could send it to, I don't know.
So it's basically to limit parking on Main Street and also in the front row of the parking lot for two hours.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And then to set aside four spaces at the back of the parking lot for vendors. And to increase the um.
Right.
It was, yeah, a couple of minor changes, but. Shouldn't rock too many boats, I don't think.
I wouldn't think so. It's not like we're saying they gotta pay a fee to put their morgue in the harbor and have it.
Which we didn't, we didn't even. Don, go ahead.
I had a question, uh, where do we stand with the Knox County Sheriff meeting, is any?
I know, that kind of.
I don't know, Don, maybe um, he's, at one point, he said, well, why don't you have um. Mister Young contact me, you know, personally, you know.
I think it should be at the group, not, I can, I have no problem talking to him, but I.
Well, he said he could only be like ten or twelve, and I remember me and Leslie replied to the email.
Big day leaving and that.
No one else replied, besides, I, I just said, I, I can't commit, you guys pick a day that works for. Anyone and then I'll try and make it, but I can't say I'll be in at noon time or two o'clock.
Yeah, he wanted to meet.
Sometime next week, I wouldn't know what days I'm gonna be on the boat.
He wanted to meet the first two weeks of October and I.
Well, I mean, he's, he's running for office, so that, that big thing is gonna end in a week.
Yeah.
That big time, so maybe he'll have more time after that.
Of course, now the boats are.
All I can do is try to contact him again and see if I can get.
I'm just not gonna forget it, just.
I could.
Would that be?
If possible, but if, if it's gonna be too difficult, yeah, no, it's gonna be in the middle of the day, like I also can't do it. Easier to do an evening Zoom call, if, if we can, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, so you would like him to come out in the evening and just spend the night?
Or bring the warden boat out and go back on it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, he's not gonna spend the night.
And they never do.
God forbid, they get stuck around that island.
Well, there was one in the grocery store down when I was, or came up here, so he must be staying the night. It was at four thirty and the last one was at three fifteen, so.
Yeah, I saw him in there too, I must have been in there right after you.
Must have, yeah.
He was just checking out.
With that car and that. Sorry, so I, you're done with your report?
Yeah, unless yet, anybody has any questions?
More questions from my jury, all right, reporter members. All right, and move adjourned, all those in favor?
Tell everyone to vote next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Everybody vote.
Everybody's already voted.
I, I saw they said that, it was on track to, to break the twenty eighteen early voting, but.
Twenty-nine.
I guess not twenty-twenty, because that was the huge pandemic.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think they'll break that, I don't think they will either.
So the next meeting is the fifteenth and we'll have one the twenty-ninth. Yeah, we'll get three in this month.
That's good for me, then we'll only have one in December, probably, we'll meet in the middle of December.
Yeah, and then we, and then we won't have one till the next. Yes, we may, it probably, yes.